... Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just for all.
Justice for all. Welcome, everyone. This is a subcommittee meeting of the subcommittee, the Board of Commissioners Subcommittee for Public Safety. Commissioners Clark, myself, and Higgins are on this subcommittee. And we also have Commissioner R. and Commissioner Nagel here, joining us to listen to this discussion. It's January 12th, 2017. And the subject of tonight's, this is a very informal and short meeting with one distinct subject matter. And that subject is the problem that we have with emergency communications at the Willows and Skunk Hollow Park. So, by way of background, we have been presented with this problem in separate meetings. The Board of Commissioners has seen a presentation about the shortcomings of our emergence, our capabilities in terms of emergency communications at the Willows and the Skunk Hollow Park. So we are starting this meeting out with acknowledging, recognizing, and having the problem already diagnosed. So this, this meeting is not about whether there's a problem, there is a problem, and we have to figure out what to do about it. And we have invited some, there are some people here that are going to speak to us and talk to us about alternatives. We are specifically asking and thinking through what the alternatives are to address the problem of the shortcomings in communicating, being able to communicate, short of putting a cell tower in. This is not a meeting about putting a cell tower in. Assuming that there is no cell tower there, what are our other options? Is there a technology out there that can help us with this problem if we don't use a cell tower? You know, in 2017? And that is what we are here to talk about. And if there is, or if there are several options, what would be the next steps we would take to start to make progress on making that happen? You know, is there some sort of antenna, or boosters, or can we use existing structures, existing utility poles? These are the questions that we want to hear a little bit about. We have a gentleman here with us tonight named Jonathan, please forgive me if I say it wrong, Hernitis?
Jimenez.
Jimenez. Jimenez. And he has expertise in this field, and he actually also participated in the study that was presented to us at the Board of Commissioner level that diagnosed this problem and showed us how these shortcomings affected us. So not only does he have expertise in treating the problem, he was involved in diagnosing our own problem, which is a great perspective to have. We also have with us tonight some of our own public safety officers. We have Superintendent Calrulo, we have Lieutenant Block here, and we have Steve G. N. Christofora here with us, who is and works with the county and with Radnor in diagnosing and taking care of our IT problems. So we have a nice cast of support here. And I've set forth the issue. The goal for tonight is really, and we're not going to solve anything tonight, but just hear some of the things that we might take possible next steps in pursuing to deal with this problem, assuming we're not going to put a cell tower in there. And then this subcommittee can, if we want to vote or decide by consensus, to bring those suggestions to the board level to move forward, or not. So with having laid all that groundwork, I am going to invite Jonathan up to just briefly give us a little bit of your background, and you can maybe start to answer some of the questions I just put forward. And I'd like to keep this informal, and I also hope that we can keep this short, given the, oh, I'm sorry, we also have, excuse me, we have some representatives from the fire company here as well, who can have some great input. And it would be great if Joe McGuire would come up and also weigh in on your thoughts on some of the approaches that we have, and Jenny McGuire as well. Okay?
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yeah.
There's also Chief Dan Kincaid from the Brimmar Fire Company here as well.
Oh, thank you so much for coming, from the Brimmar Fire Company, so that, so we'll have even another perspective from our neighboring township. All right, so thank you so much for being here, and for answering some questions for us, and helping us figure this problem out.
Thank you. So as you mentioned, we were asked by the township to provide a study to diagnose the issues with emergency communications in the Willows, Skunk Hollow, and Eithon Valley Creek areas. And what we determined was there is a deficiency in the radio reception for those emergency responder radios in those areas. We took real-world tests using the same equipment that the responders use, in the same environment that they would use, and the results that we tallied were using those real-world variables. And many of those results were very poor. A lot of areas, a police officer, a firefighter, or paramedic using a portable radio would not be able to reach for help, call for assistance, render some type of message to incoming units in those areas. And that study showed that there's going to be a need for additional equipment to be placed in those areas. In the traditional sense, we would put the additional equipment on towers. Not a cellphone tower, per se, but a structure high enough off the ground to receive those signals and to also transfer back out. In the current configuration for Delaware County, which is an analog conventional system, there aren't many, many alternatives that can be done for this type of scenario, which is unique. The geography of that section of the township does pose some issues to radio signals, which we knew about. Height is key. That is the cure of all these issues. The higher, the better. Will maximize the reception and the retransmitting of those messages. You start to remove the height of those antennas, it starts to reduce how well it can do its job. I know many of us have seen those antennas on top of utility poles that are being used by some of the cell carriers. Those kind of alternatives are not the best in this particular scenario for a number of reasons. One is the height, as I spoke about. Two is the infrastructure, or the backhaul of getting that data, that signal, from the core, in this case, it's in Lima, where the Delaware County 911 Center is, to those antennas. Each of those antennas would have to be connected back. In this case, most likely a Verizon line. Those lines, as we know, cost money. Typical T1, which is the type of communication circuit, it's about $400 to $500 each for a circuit of that cost. If you were to do that, you would need dozens of those type of antennas and down in that area to cover those geographical areas because of the height. If you do move forward with something like that, the next problem becomes is, can Delaware County's equipment handle that many additional sites? I don't have those answers. Stevie G. would be the best to answer that. But every core, or every backend has limitations. How many additional sites can you add? You start talking about adding, well, we need to add 20 more sites, they might not be able to handle that. So that's also a stumbling block when it comes to seeking that type of alternative. Without a really a bigger structure, whether it be a building, or other type of man-made structure in that area, there aren't many places to put these antennas. And I think we've all spoke about, there is a need for antennas, increased antennas somewhere in that area. It's just where to put them, and getting them as high as we can. That, in my opinion, in my professional background, is definitely the way to go in this scenario. So...
What is the way to go? More antenna?
Is adding more antennas at a maximum height as possible. What that height is, we spoke after the testing was complete, and we approximated that something in the region of 120 feet would be the best choice. We talk about, you know, pie in the sky, doing the best scenario, that would be the best. If that isn't allowed, and the height had to come down, that might work. It certainly might be. 190 feet, but you start encroaching the tops of those trees, you're pretty much providing a null. It really isn't going to solve many issues, other than a very small area where that antenna might be.
So these, you mentioned Lima, or Lima.
Correct.
Is that the telecom center for the county?
Correct.
So let's just take it hypothetical. If we added these antennas you're referring to, and I'm not sure we will do that, but if we did, would that impact Lima's ability? Would they have to add capacity there?
They, they might certainly have to, correct. Yes, they might have to increase the size of their core or backend to accommodate all of these extra antennas. Once again, talking about pie in the sky, the best case scenario, using a tower as high as it would be allowed, you would just have to add two antennas, possibly three, which, to my understanding, would be, to be able to be accommodated at the communication center.
So for example, in Skunk Hollow, which is, it's a hollow, it's way down there.
Correct.
This is infeasible, I take it, because we can't, we can't go up 120 feet. There will still be trees higher than 120 feet.
You're absolutely correct, correct.
So that doesn't sound, but even if we could, how many, just to cover that gap or that hole in Skunk Hollow, assuming we could get up, how many antennas would we need at the top of this structure?
I would use the, the ground elevation to our advantage, and that elevation is behind the mansion itself, is the kind of highest point, and it would cover that whole hollow area because of the ground elevation. If you want to put something in the hollows itself, you would, you would need a handful more antennas just to cover that, that hole.
So behind the mansion is where, and that would cover the Willows and Skunk Hollow?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Do you have any experience with very tall antenna on other structures? Do you, is, do you come across that in other townships?
I do, correct. Buildings and tower structures. Those, depending on the size of the building, again, you try to look at the tallest building that you can put something on. That is feasible, there are restrictions about cost and logistics of installing something that property owners don't want, big giant antennas, so you have to work with them, but height is key. So you always try to find the tallest building or structure. If you're trying to, in this scenario, fill in a gap or fill in the hole, just find the tallest building you can, and try to work with the property owner, putting an antenna on it.
And what, can you just describe what an antenna like that, on top of a building, would look like?
My recommendation would be for fiberglass whip. Its diameter would only be about one and a half inches at most, between five and seven feet tall, and comes from the manufacturer in white, but it can be painted. That would be my, it's the, it's the least intrusive type of antenna. There are other antennas that are made for different applications that are metal, have metal loops on them. They're not as, I understand, attractive to look at, but fiberglass whip, you know, blends in with the sky and the background, and it can be painted.
And can you describe on, like, utility poles, how tall is an average utility pole?
Utility poles can be between 25, 35-foot tall. Some of the high-tension poles that you see along a major highway, they're even taller than that. And talking land mobile radio, or public safety radio, a tower or an antenna only 25 feet off the ground is, is just not feasible, or not productive to cover what you need to cover by only having something 25 feet off the ground. Hence why a lot of the cellphone carriers put many of them along the way, because they only cover a very small area.
Many cellphone towers put many what?
A single antenna on top of each utility pole.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay. And I, I can't remember what on that property is there now in terms of pole infrastructure?
I can't remember if the power comes off Derby Paley Road via utility pole, if it's underground, I honestly do not remember.
It does, but I don't know how tall they are, I don't know what type they are.
They were probably your standard telephone height, you know, telephone utility poles, 25, 35-foot tall telephone poles. Another wrinkle, call it, is unlike the cell carriers who put that single antenna on top of utility pole, to make it work with Delaware County systems, we would have to put two or three antennas, most likely three, on each pole. So you would have a candle opera-type fixture on top of each pole, if you were to do that. Again, it's, it's just not, it's very, very costly, and it's not very, it's very prohibitive doing that type of operation on top of utility pole, having all those antennas on each pole down the road. That's, those are some of the logistics in doing that type of...
Do we have, does anybody know, do we have utility poles at the Willows?
Yeah.
The power comes up between the Skunk Hollow and the Willows along that border, and there's a pole out behind the mansion to the Skunk Hollow side, it's probably a 35 or 40-foot pole. And that's the terminus for the Willows, and it also feeds your pump at...
A pole down the hill from the...
Feeds the pump.
Okay.
So you could, if you could get on, if you have a clear shot off the top of that, would that be a benefit, as long as it clears the building?
It would be the treetops at that point, looking at the foliage, looking at the trees.
Well, the treetops, the other way around, Newtown, we don't care about Newtown.
Yeah, that, that's also the challenge in putting antennas up, is that you want to be above those barriers. And when we calculate coverage for radio signals, we take into account the leaves. How dense are the trees? How many trees? Is it the wintertime? Is it the summertime? So when we did this test in July, that was worst-case scenario. So temperature is a variable, and then the foliage is also a variable. So we took that into account. So you want to be above the trees.
So when you were out in July, did you look at these poles, the tallest poles on the tallest point, and...
We did not specifically look at them. No, we didn't.
It goes without saying that we have tree problems if we use the poles at the Willows.
Correct. I do remember there being some pretty good coverage behind the mansion of trees. It was actually very shady, so it must have been, you're in a shady spot.
So have you seen the one that we have at the firehouse?
I have, yes. I am familiar with that one.
So this would be significantly smaller, what you're saying, than, than what we have there?
The one at the firehouse is approximately 90 feet tall.
Right, right.
It would be similar in construction, a lattice type, with small legs that are connected with small pieces of steel. That would be certainly a suggestion for that type of structure. Yes.
Okay.
So is, so I'm hearing there's a separate structure that Commissioner Clark is talking about, like the one we have at the firehouse, that's a possibility.
Correct.
Putting antenna on existing buildings, putting antenna on existing poles.
Correct.
Those are three approaches.
Approaches, correct.
Is, is there anything else that we're not?
Unfortunately, in that area, there is not. There's only residences, you know, single-family dwellings in that area. There's no commercial buildings in the immediate area, which we typically would look to, to put an antenna, but as we all know, in the Willows, there's, there's nothing, nothing in that area.
So let me ask you this. When you, when a resident calls up Compest, or Verizon, or whatnot, and says, "I'm having trouble with my signal," they offer you, well, you, for $200, we'll come in and we'll give you this booster.
Correct.
And they come in, and now all of a sudden, you have, you have service.
Correct.
So what is that?
So that is a completely different type of technology than what we use in public safety land mobile radio. What they're doing is they're taking the radio signal from your cellphone, it's being intercepted by a box, that box is connected to the internet, that internet connection goes back to your cellphone provider's core, AT&amp;T, Verizon, and whatnot, and then you're out to the world. That's how those work. And again, as you know, that box only kind of covers your house, it covers a very small area. So that's converting kind of your low-power cellphone signal into a data stream or an IP stream, and that goes out to the cell carrier.
Is there any way we could incorporate that technology to help us out here?
Unfortunately, not with Delaware County's system, yeah, not with an analog conventional system. Yeah, that is unfortunate, you couldn't do that.
Are neighboring counties similar? Do they have the same issues?
No. Neighboring counties are digital, and what we call trunt. Their radio communications are more of a data stream or an IP stream. So yeah, Delaware County is a little unique in its configuration.
Was that behind? Is that what just, is that what that means? Just out of curiosity, all right.
Is there any talk anywhere of changing everything to digital in Delaware County?
That would be an answer. A question from the higher-ups at Delaware County. Yeah, that is beyond...
I mean, it would be a shame to go through all of this, and then in five years, or two years, or three years.
That's a, that's a very interesting, or question that you brought up, because when you do convert a public safety system, a county-wide public safety system, from analog to digital, the standards for building that out are different than an analog system. Those standards require you have many, many more towers. For example, neighboring county is in the current process of converting its system to digital. They are doubling their tower count. So just food for thought in the future, if you're thinking about, well, we only need this many or this high, when the switch to digital happens, you almost always will need more towers to fill those same areas, because the requirements of coverage are much more stringent.
And you're not talking about cellphone service at this point?
Correct.
You're talking about telecom, communications.
Public safety land mobile radio, correct.
What are, what are the other counties that are on this analog system now? Do you know?
Yeah, Stevie, it might be better to answer. Off the top of my head, there's not many in this area.
Do you know that, Stevie?
Yes. Delaware County is analog. Bucks County is analog right now, they're going to digital. But for Delaware County to switch from analog to digital, you're talking almost $500 million. Because every piece of infrastructure in the county, every portable, every mobile, every site, every antenna, we have 43 sites, we have almost 500 receipt pieces of equipment out there in 43 sites. Every piece of equipment would have to be changed out. We'd have to almost triple, as Jonathan mentioned, when you go from analog to digital, you're going from 500 megahertz frequencies to 700 and 800 megahertz frequencies. The higher you go in frequency level, the more towers you need. So right now, Radnor has four sites: Wayne Hotel, Ivan Avenue, Radnor House, and Notre Dame Academy. You would need probably at least six or seven more throughout Radnor Township, high sites that would be able to cover a digital system.
And do you have, either of you, or anyone here, know of any other spots in Delaware County that don't have perfect coverage under this analog system?
Our whole corridor, from where we're at...
Do you mind, do you mind coming up and speaking at the mic, so that people at home can hear you?
For the Brimmar Fire Company, the whole corridor from St. Aloysius Academy out to 320, turning right, going up towards Clyde Road, it's terrible. And, but we're on the 800 system, like Steve said, and Montgomery County's not doing anything to enhance that in area for us.
So how do you handle it at this point? What have you...
Just keep on trying.
Keep on trying to...
Just hold our radio until we catch it.
I see.
What it does is bonks, it bonks, it bonks, until we get service. Once we get service, we start talking.
Okay.
And the other thing we do often is go to cell phones.
Use your cellphone and then call directly...
I call the county directly, right to the dispatcher.
So in effect, is that what's happening now in the Willows and Skunk Hollow when there's an issue?
Not really, because cell phones don't work there either. And it's not just the Willows, it's Eithon Valley Park also. Eithon Valley Park is a complete dead zone for cellular and police, fire, and EMS channels. And you can't even call out on a cellphone, because there's no coverage there at all for cell.
So going back to my question about other areas where you have troubles, how, what is the approach been in those other areas?
What we normally do is, if we get a radio complaint, we'll go out and investigate it, find out, we'll do a coverage area, what we call a spin. We'll look at the antennas around that area and see if we can either raise one or lower one to improve. As Jonathan said, adding sites is a very, very big project for us. We can't just say that we're going to put up 10 towers in the Willows and connect them all back to the county. Every site we have, we have 43 sites in the county, all throughout. Some are on buildings, some are on tow, some are on high-rise buildings, some are on towers, okay? Commercial towers and towers the county owns. Each one of those sites has to be connected back to the 911 Center, either by phone line or microwave. Each one of those sites uses what we call a channel bank. A channel bank is a piece of equipment that we need to have at our 911 Center that will take the transmissions from that site, it measures them against all the other receivers on that site, and it sends the strongest one to the dispatcher. So the dispatcher, when they key up, they're not just keying up a tower at the 911 Center, they're keying up multiple towers around the county. When somebody talks back, they're talking back to the closest tower around them. It may be 20 feet from where the officer is to a tower, or it may be half a mile. Height is everything when it comes to placing, placing antennas, okay? The higher you go, obviously, the more coverage you're going to get. As we, Jonathan and I went out and did those tests, it's not the problem of the officers hearing us. Transmitters are very, very powerful. There's one, there's transmitters right here. There's ones at Radnor House. Those are the two sites for transmitters and Radnor. It's the receivers. Because the officers are out there with a very, I don't want to say small, but low-powered 5-watt radio, trying to talk back to the closest receiver. The Willows is a complete dead zone. We couldn't get any talk back at all, and we even had some problems hearing the dispatcher calling us. Eithon Valley Park, the same way. Adding a site is a big deal for us. It's, it's not only costly, but it requires a lot of equipment, a lot of engineering to making sure that that site works properly. It also needs to be maintained, okay? If that site hangs up, it's going to take the channel down. And when you're talking about channels, we're not just talking about one police channel here. We're talking about multiple fire channels, multiple EMS channels, and two police channels in command. So if you put a tower up somewhere, yeah, it may only have one antenna or two antennas, but down in the base where the equipment is, you may be receiving 10 different channels down there, and sending all those signals back to the 911 Center via T1 line. Everything has to make it back to the Lima 911 Center in one way or another, whether it's microwave or phone line, one way or another. So obviously, height is everything when it comes to RF. And going to a digital system is going to make the problem worse, because now you have to triple the amount of towers you have around town, the amount of antennas.
So what system have we been using over there for the last, you know, five decades?
Well, Jonathan can speak, or Chief McGuire can speak. When they get an ambulance called down in the Willows, they, they get zero radio talk back. They have to put the patient in the ambulance and wait till they get out on Conestoga Road or somewhere, or somewhere else to, to be able to phone into the hospital, because there's no cell coverage or no talk back to us. So usually, they're down there, and there's no communications down on the scene at all. Same with Eithon Valley Park. Now, the advantage of Eithon Valley Park is it's going to kill a bunch of birds with one stone. By that, I mean, you're going to get coverage in and around that area, plus you're also, Radnor Fire covers a large portion of 476. There are some sketchy areas on 476. So having that tower right next to 476 is going to be a big plus.
What, what are you talking about? What is going to get them that?
A tower at Eithon Valley Park.
A cell tower?
Yes. No, just a tower. It doesn't have to be a cell tower. I just, I, give me 100 feet in the air, and I'll put the antennas up there, and we'll put receivers. However it gets in the air...
So this alternate tower that you're talking about, does it have all the requirements that a cell tower has, with the 50 by 50 base and the road to it?
It would look very similar. Now, cell, cell towers come in different flavors. You have a monopole, which is a big, round, thick tower, right? It's, it's very obvious, you can't miss it, okay? They can go 90, 100, 125, usually 150 is the top height for a monopole. Or you can have, like Jonathan has at the firehouse, what's called a lattice. A lattice has a little bit bigger footprint on the ground, but you don't see it as much because the, the legs are much thinner. There's three legs that go up on a lattice, and then it has lattice work in the middle to hold it all together. Those are much less obtrusive, because you could actually see through it from a distance. So if, if you just put a tower up there without a lot of cell arrays on there, it's, I'm not saying it's going to be impossible to see, but having a lattice tower with just our antennas on the top, it's not going to be as obtrusive as a big monopole.
And what is the clearing space it needs?
I would say, clearing space, you're probably going to need 30 by 30 feet, 35, 35 would be obvious. And, and most of the sites that we have are fenced in, they're stoned, they're manicured, they're kept up, the weeds are controlled, all that, all those things need to be happening. All those things need to happen. Plus, you have to have HVAC, you have to have, you know, all the amenities that you would have in a building. And you'd have to have Verizon service there, because the Verizon D mark would connect that site back to the county 911 Center. This, and most of this stuff's enclosed, it can either be an out, a small outside cabinet, or it could be a building. For something like this, we'd opt for a small outside cabinet, at the base of the tower, either under the tower or alongside, that you probably wouldn't even see unless you're standing right next to it.
So I'm just going back to the beginning of your explanation of some of the alternatives. What would be involved in getting an assessment of, you know, going out there, looking at the poles that are there, the buildings that are there, and I'm back to the Willows and Skunk Hollow, and doing a more involved assessment of what is there that we could build upon?
That assessment will have to start, we're working, as we did with the study in July with Stevie G., because he'll be able to... with Stevie G, because he'll be able to fill me in on what his core can handle. If you tell me his core could only handle a handful of sites, we pretty much can't move forward knowing that we can't add, you know, three, four, or five more sites. After that, if that question is answered differently, we can go out there and do a study. But I'll tell you that the study's going to show, you're going to need something on every utility pole up and down Darby Paoli Road. Just knowing the height of those poles and how many, and the geography of those hills and valleys in that area, you're going to need something on every pole. I can tell you that from the get-go.
Okay.
But that's certainly, we have to have some background discussion as far as what the backend can handle. If it can't handle much, it's no reason in having a study, because it won't handle that many.
Yeah. Right, right now, we have available, availability for 15 more sites. 12 of those sites are already committed to, we're adding existing receivers to existing towers and sites for better coverage. We have two, two available for Radnor. One for one tower, one for another tower. That's all we can handle right now, because of our infrastructure. So putting towers on telephone poles, it's just not feasible, because we would need a separate slot for each telephone pole. And the telephone line cost of that site back to the 911 center would be astronomical. Right now, just, just a single receiver site, like what we pay over at Notre Dame Academy, is probably around $250 a month. Here, at Ivan Avenue, we have a T1, because we have multiple receivers here and transmitters. That's probably like $600 or $700 a month that the county pays Verizon to keep that site open, to keep that site going. So we have two slots right now available.
Let me ask a good question.
And each, each site takes a slot?
Stevie and Jonathan, not necessarily Eithon Valley Park, but the corridor along 476 there, because Radnor Valley has a monopole. Somewhere along there, if we put something up on top of one of those hills to start with, and then stuck it up 90, 100 feet, would that cover over at Willows and Ravens, Ravens Cliff and those areas?
Eithon Valley, yes. The Willows, no. The distance between that 476 corridor and the valleys, it's the valleys of the Willows. That's the tough part. It's just the curvature of the earth, getting from that spot in 476, and to come down to those valleys. I wouldn't do it. If I were the person organizing that system upgrade or build out, I wouldn't recommend that.
Does anyone have any other questions from the?
Yeah, the, the cost figures you were talking about, bearing in mind what Commissioner Schaefer said at the beginning, that this is not to discuss cell towers.
Yes.
I'm still going to ask this question. If a cell tower were erected at Eithon Valley or at Skunk Hollow, and your antennas were put on top of it, what are, what are those costs?
Commissioner, let me, I can talk from experience here, because I've orchestrated probably six or seven of these so far. What you do is, if the municipality is putting up a tower somewhere, and during the negotiations of the tower, number one, you want to make sure that public safety has the top 30 feet of the tower, okay? And that's, that's put into the agreement, okay? The second thing is, you also put in the agreement that the tower company install the antennas that are needed, because that's the expensive part, the tower climb and the cabling down and, and all that. You would include that in the agreement between the township or whomever and who's ever putting the tower up. Once the tower is up, your antennas are already up. Then what you need at the bottom is you need receivers, you need multi-couplers, you need combiners, you need all that stuff. The county would provide that. That's our responsibility to provide that. So all we would need is an enclosure or an outside cabinet, which we would provide, install the, we would install the receivers in a cabinet, okay? And the cabinet would be air-cooled for summertime and heated for wintertime. That's the county's responsibility. And we'd be responsible for maintaining the equipment and making sure that the equipment's functioning properly. So the big dollar item is the antenna installation, the tower climb. And if that's all built into the agreement between the private person putting the tower up, or the township, wherever it is, usually, they don't balk at all. Because while they're doing this work, it's much easier for them to install that equipment that we need. And then we just come in when the tower's up and everything's done, and just install our equipment on the bottom side.
What would be the power source for the heating-ventilating?
We would have, the county would provide a PICO circuit, wherever it is. And the cabinets that we have are self-contained, they have HVAC units built in. Or if there's going to be a building there, provided by another carrier, we'd make an agreement with them to house our equipment in their building. We pay the PICO bill, and they would provide the HVAC and the security.
But you would pay for the PICO to run the conduit?
Yes. That, that would be the county responsibility, yes.
Now, do you charge, does the county charge? I think I know the answer.
No, sir.
You don't charge us?
We do not charge five cents. It all comes from your county tax dollars, your dollar a month on your landline phone bill, and your dollar a month on your cell bill. That's what keeps us afloat. Unfortunately for us, people are getting rid of their landlines, and those fees are dropping. Cells are going up, but the landlines are dropping. But that's where we get our funds. And we're funded by the county.
Is there any technology of the future that would supplant what you've been talking about here?
The only new technology that's come around lately is the cellphone, the in-home cellphone booster. But as far as covering outdoor spaces, large outdoor spaces, it's towers and antennas at maximum heights possible. I am not aware of anything new coming about, other than technology able to squeeze more conversations into one frequency. Those are the only things that are coming up and about in this kind of world and profession is the ability. Right now, say, for example, Delaware County, you can only squeeze one conversation on one frequency. They're moving to two and four. Those are the only advancements that I know of. As far as antennas and cellphones, got to have a tower, got to have a structure to support those antennas.
Again, this is a question off, off the subject matter a little bit. But for the people that have asked some of us for cellphone relief for the past four years, you described something, a booster, and now I just wrote some quick notes. You intercept the cellphone radio signal, there's a box involved, the internet, cell carrier, and so forth. Now, is any homeowner in the Willows area, Round Hill or Ravens Cliff, Inverary, that has dead zones, and any homeowner down in Eithon Valley area, are they today able to buy one of these booster kits and?
They are.
$200 bucks.
It will only cover your residence. Yeah, it'll only cover your residence. Soon as you leave your house, that booster is.
So your backyard, you're saying it wouldn't work in the backyard?
It works in the backyard.
Yeah. It's a very, very small footprint.
AT&amp;T's version is called the AT&amp;T Microcell. You purchase it, it'll only allow 10 people. They must be registered on there. So it's not going to give coverage to people driving by your house. You have to physically register the phone number to that device, and it'll cover your house and just the immediate area around your house. It's not like a cell tower or anything like that. And it's $200, AT&amp;T's is $200 bucks. I don't know what Verizon's is, but.
Is there a monthly charge for that also?
I don't believe so. I think it's.
No, I don't believe so. I think it's an upfront, one-time charge.
Yeah.
But again, it's not going to help your neighbor, because unless their phone is registered to that device.
Well, all the neighbors would do it.
Each house would have one.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
Each house. You don't want to, you don't want to have the whole neighborhood on there, because now you're going to have problems with your phone getting out. It's very good at handling one call at a time. You get more than one call on there, you might have a problem. And actually, when you walk into the house, it actually registers on your phone, AT&amp;T Microcell. So you're no longer on the AT&amp;T network, you're on the internet-based network. And I have one at my shore home, and it's constantly dropping calls, because I have zero AT&amp;T coverage where my shore house is. I had to have one there, because if the radio room needs to get me, they need to get me. But traditionally, you talk about a minute on it, and then it drops. Then you got to call back again.
So again, in our.
It's not perfect.
An example in Round Hill, which is over near the Willows, if everybody on the street, streets, plural, got one of these boosters, would it be totally self-defeating?
No.
Nobody would have service?
No, they would all have service. He's saying you can't use one for all your neighbors.
Correct.
I understand that. Okay.
And you would all have to be the same carrier. Here's another variable. Everyone might be T-Mobile, Verizon, AT&amp;T.
Yeah.
Each one is specific to that carrier.
Let's get back to our subject matter, which is emergency communications in the Willows.
Elaine, I have a question.
Sure.
You mentioned, Steve, that there's two slots left at the county level reserved for Radnor. So is there, is there a time value of that? Is there some time?
No, sir. I'm willing to wait as long as it takes.
Okay.
Okay? We have, we have adequate slots right now to handle the receivers that we're putting up in other areas of the county. Those two slots are reserved for Radnor whenever Radnor's ready.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And was there any analysis or look, when you guys went out in July, at the surrounding area for suitable locations that were not in our public parks?
We drove around for a couple hours, trying to look at different locations. We're already on Radnor House, so that's not going to help anything. We looked at Bryn Mawr Hospital, that's too low. I mean, every conceivable spot that we could put something was either not high enough, which is most of the time, or just not suitable. So we did.
How about other suitable locations?
We looked at Skunk Hollow. Skunk Hollow is, Skunk Hollow is just too low. We're not going to be able to do anything at Skunk Hollow.
Right. How about other suitable locations for towers?
We are at all of the highest spots in the township now. We're at, we're on the roof of Wayne Hotel, we're on the roof of Radnor House 10 stories up, we're on Ivan Avenue at the top of this tower right here. So, I mean, all of the hotspots, we've already got, we're already up.
I guess you're missing, I'm not making myself clear. Over in the area where we don't have coverage.
There are no towers that we saw.
Right, exactly. And I'm asking, have we looked at suitable locations for a tower that aren't on, in public parks?
Well, we looked around. I mean, there, there are, but you're going to have to deal with a private owner then.
Right.
All right, that's, that's the problem.
It was the only property we saw.
And.
Private, but you found suitable places in private?
Single-family dwelling properties. There was no commercial property or township-owned property.
HOA lands?
It was all, well, that I'm not, you know, specific on, but it was all in that area. It's just single-family dwelling plots.
Well, there are several homeowners associations over there, many, many of them over there. So, you know, that may be something that we can consider. And I think many of those residents would like to have self-service, so they might be amenable to working with the township in putting, you know, a tower that might help them and the emergency service.
Madam Chairwoman, it's to my understanding, the one carrier that we were talking to, in regards to towers, they had reached out to the three homeowners associations in the area, and they were not interested in participating. They had spoken, and they were not.
Probably for the same reasons that we aren't, because it devalues your, your land. I mean, this is a problem.
I think they all pointed that the ideal location would be in our spot.
Of course they did.
Oh, sure. Just for, maybe if I can add, and I think this goes to Commissioner Higgins' point, the cost, I believe, for, to construct this, and correct me if I'm wrong here, to put an antenna up in that area behind the Willows mansion would cost the township somewhere about a half million dollars to construct that antenna. That would go up, and then there would be the, I believe that.
Using our ideal height structure, correct.
Correct. And then we'd have the additional cost for the lines to go in there, and then the power. So that would be something that we would be looking at, what our expense would be. If we looked at a particular other structure that someone would come in and put in, we would look at the township spending no money, actually someone paying us between a million and a half and $2 million for the first 10 years in rent upfront, and then in year 11, actually paying us a rent. That's for one carrier. They would put the antennas up on the top of the tower, do the installation.
Bob, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I, I think we're trying to focus on options that we could look at if we don't go that route. Okay?
Sure.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment or ask a question or anything? Hi, Sarah.
Sir, Pillen Garrett Avenue. I think we have a decision to make, and that's to decide whether prettiness or people's health come first. And as a person who slipped and fell, slipped on a pumpkin that had been left from the Fall Festival and hit a tree and dislocated my shoulder, I can speak to what Mr. McGuire said. Fortunately, David Ogilvy was able to get to the township, and an ambulance came, and they could do nothing for me till they got to Bryn Mawr Avenue. So we went all the way down Darby Paoli Road to Bryn Mawr Avenue, and then they could communicate with the hospital. I think we really, sure, nobody wants a cell tower at the Willows. Me, as much as anybody. But it's people's safety. And I'm sorry, I think people's safety comes before aesthetics. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that'd like to say anything, or ask any questions, or make any points? Sure.
Andy Santillo, I just wanted to thank this, the Board of Commissioners for having this subcommittee meeting, because I can tell you, based on conversation that the Park and Rec Board had right before this, this is an issue that is a very big concern to us, especially in light of the discussion that was had extensively about the Ardrajin Trail, what that's going to look like and what it's going to be. I can, I don't, I will speak personally, I won't speak on the other behalf of the other members of the board, but I think many of them agree with me, that we have very big reservations about breaking ground on that trail until this issue is addressed. For the township to open, township-owned lands up, to invite people to come in, without this issue being satisfactorily addressed, I think is a grave issue that, that I do not think we would go forward with. And I could tell you, I personally would not recommend moving forward on those trails until this is addressed. So I just wanted to thank you for having this meeting, having this discussion.
Thank you, Andy.
Yeah, hi, I'm Kim White, and I'm with the Inverary Homeowners Association, and we're one of the ones that does not have cell coverage. So I just want to get the, the cell plug in. And I have a booster, and I have no, I have limited cell coverage.
Okay, thanks, Kim.
With the booster.
Thanks for coming up.
It was free.
Oh, good for you, a good negotiator. Anybody else? Hi, Roy.
Could the members of the committee summarize for me? Have we heard of an alternative that is practical and could work in the course of this meeting?
We have not. So we, you know, we, we set this meeting to see what alternatives are out there, and we have not heard it tonight. I'm still not convinced that we have turned every stone, because I don't think we're the only community that has this issue. And I'm going to continue to push for us to research this and find. There's one more thing that I didn't, we didn't talk about at all tonight, and I don't know if this has come up, but a land, a telephone line, a landline. You know, often, you have, on college campuses or wherever, you have landlines put in, in places where you need them, emergency communication. And, you know, that has worked pretty well for 50 years. Is that something that is, people have thought about?
They've gotten away from wired units, and that's all cellular-based now, because it's much more cost-effective for them to just put a pole in the ground and put a telephone there, but it actually connects to the cell network. So without the cell network, they're not going to work.
Right. But those neighborhoods all around there have landlines.
Yes, but it does, those phones don't connect by landline, they connect by cellular.
Any other thing, Commissioner? I don't think a landline will help a police officer or a firefighter that's mobile at the time.
But in terms of calling in an emergency, you could use a cellphone or a landline.
Well, the landline would have to be near where the emergency happens, that's the problem.
Right, right, right. You couldn't just have one, for sure, for sure.
One other question. Most of the conversation we've been talking about are handhelds. What about the units in the vehicles?
We tried both. Many of the mobiles could not make it back from the Willows. We had a mobile right in our vehicle, did not make it.
Well, what's, handheld's what, 5 watts?
5 watts.
How about a dash?
25 watts.
Right. And that wouldn't make it either?
But remember, too, that.
I know power is not.
Right. Most of the time, 95% of the time, the officers or the ambulance people are out of the car on their. on their portables. They're not going to trek back to the, you know.
If I can make one more comment, I think a lot of this too, and I understand where Elaine's coming from, you want to look at every turn, every stone and look at this, because it's not the most attractive to look at those. But I think the geography plays against us in a lot of these areas here, and I think from what Bryn Mawr Fire looks at, and that the geography just doesn't play very well here, and I think that's where, again, we continue to look at these, but I think that plays against us in these particular areas because of how the grade changes here, that it makes it more challenging for us to try to make those communication connections work for us.
All right, and I want to clarify that for.
I have one other question. How about a true repeater, a radio-to-radio, RF-to-RF repeater? If we could put some of those in?
The problem with that, Commissioner, is that the, our infrastructure won't support that technology. We're basically receiver or transmitter down to a phone line, back to the 911 center. We would not be able.
Well, I was just thinking of trying to get back to one of the receivers.
Like back to Ivan Avenue?
Yeah.
The problem you'd have, you would have collisions between an officer keying up here and an officer keying up there. Our infrastructure will just not support that. The analog won't support that.
Okay.
It was a thought, believe me, we looked at that, because, you know, put a, put two or three repeaters up there and try to, you know, have them all talk back to Ivan Avenue, it's not going to work.
Well, this has been very interesting. I want to make the point, though, in the way this conversation is going, the, looking for an alternative to a cell tower, a commercial cell tower, is not just a question of aesthetics. It's a question of the way our laws are written and the way the Supreme Court has interpreted those laws. And our public parks that are dedicated as parkland are protected, and putting a commercial operation in them is problematic. We can't just take a vote at the Board of Commissioners level and do that. It has to go to Orphans Court, and if they, if we have citizens who would like to see that park remain a park for that area, chances are they win. That's the way the case law goes. So I, it's not just a question of aesthetics. Our parkland is protected by our laws and our legislative laws and Supreme Court rulings. And so we are, we are in a position, as the Board of Commissioners, to figure out what to do about this. It sounds like it's going to cost us a lot of money to put some emergency communications in that area, but it sounds like it's something we need to do, and we need to figure out a way to do it. And the way the law of the land is right now, cell towers, it's not something we can do. So I think we all need to really work hard together to figure out what Plan B is going to be here. So.
All right, I'd like to comment.
Sure.
On that and some other things. I think on the Board of Commissioners, there's probably just one solid vote for cell towers in our parks, and that's me. I don't know where the other commissioners, I know that John and Elaine are not in favor, I don't think Don Curley is, Luke, I'm not sure, Phil, I'm not sure. But let's talk about, I'm going to draw upon what Sarah said, Sarah Pilling, I think she was right on target. Safety comes before aesthetics. I wish I had brought my whole file tonight, but I had a family situation and I didn't bring it. But in my file is a picture in a forest setting of a cell tower designed to be totally, not totally, largely invisible, indistinguishable from other trees surrounding it, so that's point number one. Point number two is what Bob Zankowski said, and that is, there is an option here that we can get this done free. We can get the, get our safety communications solved, we can get our residents in those three or four neighborhoods, five neighborhoods, if you count Eithen Valley, cell service. Won't cost the township any money, the $500,000 Bob mentioned, we certainly want to avoid that, but if you, if you bring in a commercial carrier to do all this direction work, then that, what you get in return is no bill. Now, let's get to the issue of the legal barriers. Yes, Elaine, you're exactly right. There is the Pennsylvania Deeded and Dedicated Property Act that covers parklands owned by municipalities and I suppose by the state as well. And that basically says that if you, if you seek to introduce a commercial use into a park, you have a very high burden of proof to show that there is a valid public necessity or valid public convenience for it. And I think we have that here. I think we have that when we're talking about our fire company, Chief McGuire, Chief Kincaid, our EMS people, our police, Chief Colorado, and our Lieutenant Locke. Those are all very important safety issues, and Sarah Pilling had her own personal example, a near disaster with no, no coverage, no cell coverage following her accident. So it would, it would take some, it would take political will for us to do this. We would have to prepare the necessary pleadings for the Orphans Court Division, the Court of Common Pleas in Delaware County, and we'd have to make out a case that this is a matter of public convenience and public safety, and it's something that, that is worth doing. And I apologize, Elaine, I know I'm off the subject matter of the meeting, but I just thought I would get out a couple of points there. One of the realities is, I don't know that there are four votes on the Board of Commissioners to take the path that I'm talking about, but if you just keep in mind that tower, I really think it can be done unobtrusively if the right effort is spent on it.
I just, I'm sorry to clarify this, but the legal test that the Supreme Court has announced is not a necessity test and it's not a public safety test. It's, you have to prove that the land that you are allowing to transfer to commercial use is no longer useful or suitable for the public use that it was dedicated for. That's the test. So, and some of the Supreme Court law is about cell tower commercial operations, so it's, anyway, we don't, this is not what we're here to debate tonight. We're here to come together as a community and think through long and hard how we can handle this problem, and short of putting a cell tower in. And/or, maybe some other place, some private landowner who doesn't have the Deeded and Dedicated Property Act to deal with would be interested in, in putting this type of a facility on their, on their property or homeowners' association land. Anyway, it is 9:45. We've had some really good discussion here tonight. I don't think that we've made a lot of progress, but we are continuing to try and come up with our Plan B. I hope that if anybody is out there listening and watching and has any input on this, that please chime in, contact one of the commissioners or our staff, because, you know, this is a pretty smart community, and I, often we are very successful at addressing our very difficult issues when we come together. Does anybody else have anything else to say before we wrap up? All right, well then.
Mr. Jimenez, are you a private contractor, or how did you come to give us all this helpful information?
We are a private vendor who works in public safety, business communication, so we often come in contact with these different types of technologies.
Did we get the name of your company? I can't remember.
It's called Radio Maintenance Incorporated.
Radio Maintenance Incorporated, okay.
We can get you a copy of the study if you'd like, it has our letterhead on it.
Okay, thank you.
Great, well, thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you all for being here tonight, and we will continue to work on this very thorny issue. Thanks, bye-bye.